Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're ready to begin. This Planning Commission meeting is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. We're live on KCLV, Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, and Tuesday at 5:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Fungus.
I'm here.
Vice Chair Moody.
Here.
Commissioner Goins.
Present.
Commissioner Truesdale.
Present.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Schlotman.
Present.
And Commissioner Bonar.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available to help. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We would appreciate you adhering to these rules so that our meeting goes smoothly. Thank you very much. I'm going to go on to item number four. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give us your name for the record, and the amount of discussion as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments under this item for specific action items will be cross-referenced to those items. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Seeing none, I'll move on to item number five. Item number five is for possible action to approve the final minutes for the November 4th, 2014, and the December 9th, 2014 Planning Commission meetings. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
Excuse me, Chairman, I will be abstaining from that motion.
Will that be on for both meetings?
Um, I missed December. Uh, I think, I think I was here in November.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Commissioner Moody?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My motion is to approve the minutes of the Planning Commission meetings of November 4th and December 9th, 2014.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve the minutes for the December 9th and November 4th, 2014 Planning Commission meetings passes, noting the abstention of Commissioner Quinn for the December 9th, 2014 Planning Commission meeting. Moving on to item six, our housekeeping items. Are there any items that commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action? Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the following items have been requested to be held in abeyance to the February 10th, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. Items 43 through 46, VAR 57010, WVR 57009, WVR 57212, and TMP 57007, as well as items 47 through 50, VAR 57017, WVR 57018, WVR 57213, and TMP 57025, and finally, item number 51, DIR 51723. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on any of these items? Sir, if you'll come up, please state your name and address, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Seth Floyd, 2300 West Sahara Avenue. It's actually not on one of these items. I have an additional item that we'd like to request in abeyance on.
Certainly.
Uh, it's item number 16. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, 322 LLC. As you might recall, we were here back in November. We had a pretty lengthy discussion about this application, and at that time, the Planning Commission asked that we meet with some of the interested parties, including the Fremont Street Experience, about some of the issues that were discussed at the hearing. We've been doing that pretty diligently. We've met a few times with Fremont Street and Experience and their representatives, and in fact, just as recently as Monday, we were exchanging emails about some design concepts. So, we're getting close. We're making progress. We would request that you hold that item for 60 days.
Thank you. I appreciate it. For members of the public and the commission, this is the third request for an abeyance. It's going to require showing a cause and a finding by us that there is good cause for the abeyance, and we'll deal with that separately. Good evening. Could I have your name and address, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Stephanie Allen, 8345 West Sunset Road. Here on behalf of the applicant for items number 31, 40, 41, and 42, we respectfully request that these items be held until February 10th.
Thank you. Yeah, we've got item 31, item 40, and item 42. Is that correct?
31, and then 40 through 42.
Oh, 40 through 42.
Correct. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Sir?
Lex Anderson, 3709 Waterhole Street. I'm the Neighborhood Association historian. Just to make it clear for the neighbors that are here, number 43 through 50 are in abeyance, and they'll be held at a different time, right?
That's correct. Most likely will be heard at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much. Just want to make sure everybody understood.
Thank you. And that's if we approve the abeyance, which I'm sure we will here in a moment.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on any of these items that have been asked for abeyance? We have items 43 through 46, items 47 through 50, item 16. I got items 31, and then 40 through 42. Does anybody wish to be heard on any of those items? Seeing none, I'll close public comment portion on that. Open up for discussion amongst the commissioners if they have any comments. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on for approval of the abeyance for 43 through 46, 47 through 50, 31, 40 through 42, and then we'll hold 16 for separate because it requires a finding by the commission. Commissioner Moody?
Mr. Chair, did you note item 51 as well?
I apologize. I missed that all.
Okay. So, if I can just repeat those, they are items 31, 40 through 42, 43 through 46, 47 through 50, and 51. My motion is to obey those items until the next Planning Commission meeting scheduled for February 10th, 2015.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion for abeyance carries. Okay, for item 16, just hearing what the applicant's representative stated, that folks are trying to get this worked out. We know this has been a very contentious item for several times here, and I know there's a lot of negotiations going back and forth. Personally, I feel that there is good cause, and I think we can make a finding that the there is good cause because of the attempts to try to get this issue resolved before we actually have a vote on it. Any other commissioners wish to be heard on this?
Yeah, did the applicant ask for a 30 or a 60-day?
Any other commissioners wish to be heard on item 16? I would then entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, before that, could the clerk announce that particular date for 60 days?
That would be March 9th. Excuse me, March 10th. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Moody?
Mr. Chair, for cause stated, my motion is to hold item 16 for 60 days until the March 10th, 2015 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion for abeyance carries. We'll now move on to the consent items of the agenda. Consent items are considered routine by the Planning Commission and may be enacted by one motion. However, any item may be discussed if a commission member or an applicant so desires. Okay, I will then entertain a motion on the consent items, which are items number 7, 8, and 9.
Mr. Chair, my motion is to approve items 7, 8, and 9 on the consent portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve items 11, 12, and 13 on, and I apologize, excuse me, items 7, 8, and 9 on the consent agenda carries.
Mr. Chairman, items 7, 8, and 9 are final action unless appealed within seven days.
Thank you. Now, moving on to the one-motion-one-vote portion, the following are items that may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application, or a member of the public, or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Item number 10 is SUP 55880. The applicant is Vegas Market &amp; Liquor. The owner is Friendly Bear Plaza LLC. For possible action, request for special use permit for a proposed 3,600-square-foot retail establishment with accessory package liquor, off-sale use within a proposed general retail store other than listed at 861 Nellis Boulevard, Suite 2, and Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Then we go to related items 11 and 12, beginning with item number 11, which is VAR 56830. The applicant is Avis Rent-A-Car. The owner is The Pep Boys, Manny Mo and Jack of California. For possible action, request for a variance to allow no additional parking spaces where five additional spaces are required on 1.86 acres at 4141 North Rancho Drive in Ward 4, Councilman Anthony. Staff is recommending approval. Related item number 12, SUP 56829, for possible action, request for special use permit for an automobile rental use. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 13, SUP 56728. The applicant is 518 Fremont LLC. The owner is AW Ham III Trust. For possible action, on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 4,149-square-foot tavern limited establishment at 518 Fremont Street in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Item number 14 is SUP 57015. The applicant is El Sombrero Mexican Bistro. The owner is Jose E. Aragon. For possible action, on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 1,854-square-foot tavern limited use within an existing restaurant at 807 South Main Street in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 15, which is SDR 57026. The applicant is Hartman Development. The owner is BHM Investments, Inc. For possible action, on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed 20,916 square-foot commercial building at 197 East California Street in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard on any of these items? Seeing none, I'll close public comment portion. Any of the commissioners wish to be heard on it? Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, on item 13, I'm involved with representing a client on purchase of a piece of property, and I believe one of those individuals is one of the trustees of this trust, so I'll abstain on this as abundance of caution. I also have an interest in a property directly across the street from item 15, so I'll abstain on that item as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Schlotman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. On item number 10, I'd like to pull and hear that in a public hearing. Item 13, just wanted to disclose that I've had a business relationship with one of the consultants on that project in the past, but my independence of judgment wouldn't be affected, and my business has concluded six months or a year ago on this particular project. Item number 14, I've been speaking to the applicant about possibly constructing their new improvement, so I'll be abstaining on that item. And item number 15, we're within, this particular project's within the notification area of Artifice, which is Urban Lounge that I own. However, it won't directly affect us, and my independence of judgment won't be affected, so therefore, and it won't be a business that will be directly competing with us, so I will be voting on that matter.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on the one-motion-one-vote portion of the agenda for items 10, or excuse me, items 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve items 11 through 15.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve items number 11 through 15 carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Truesdale on items 13 and 15, and the abstention of Commissioner Schlotman on item number 14.
Mr. Chairman, items 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15 are all final action unless appealed within 10 days.
Okay, we're going to go to the public hearing portion of the agenda, and we're going to start with the pulled item number 10, which is SUP 55880. The applicant is Vegas Market &amp; Liquor. The owner is Friendly Bear Plaza LLC. For possible action, request for a special use permit for a proposed 3,600-square-foot retail establishment with accessory package liquor, off-sale use within a proposed general retail store other than listed at 861 North Nellis Boulevard, Suite Number 2, in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting 143 square feet of floor space to be dedicated to the sale of alcoholic beverages, which represents less than 10% of the 2,505 square feet of total retail floor area. The proposed use meets all minimum special use permit requirements, is not within 400 feet of any protected uses. As such, staff recommends approval with conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. If we could hear from the applicant, sir, if you'll give us your name and address, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Dave Etter, 777 East Quartz Avenue, Sandy Valley, Nevada.
Thank you. Want to tell us about your project?
Absolutely. It's a convenience store, about 3,600 square feet. The operator of this location has another store. It's been experienced operator for 17 years. With the economy being as slow as it is, she's had approval on a package, accessory package liquor on another store a few years back. In order to make this store work as big as it is, she feels that she needs to go ahead and have also accessory package liquor here in order to help with bringing in the customers and keeping it up, and not a vacant building.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close public comment portion. Open up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Schlotman?
Yes, Mr. Chair, through you. You know, I mean, this particular part in town, we're especially right across or along Nellis, we're starting to see a lot of saturation of liquor stores and like accessory uses and this and that. This one was brought to my attention because I've seen 17 people protest at this beforehand saying there's six other uses within the immediate area. When I have 17 people from my ward in the immediate area that states that they don't want another liquor store, there's too much liquor, it's kind of hard for me to say yes. I'll approve this. So, pretty much where I stand tonight is either you go have a neighborhood meeting, I'd like to know when that is, or you're not going to see my support. One of the two options, and I'll go ahead and close my comments right with that.
After hearing Commissioner Schlotman's comments, do you wish to have this matter obeyed?
Yes, please.
Any other commissioners have any comments? Okay, Commissioner Schlotman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, through you. A question, are you willing to have a neighborhood meeting?
I'll discuss it with the applicant, and I'll get back to the board as soon as I can.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, through you, for staff, if a neighborhood meeting occurs, I'd like to know of that neighborhood meeting. And then, what would you suggest, 30 or 60 days?
Probably 30 days.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, on item number 10, abeyance, SUP 55880, I would make a motion to hold this item in abeyance for 30 days.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to obey item number 10 to the February 10th, 2015 meeting carries.
Thank you very much. Have a pleasant evening.
Have a good night. Okay, now move on to item number 17, which is VAC 56644. The applicant owner is School Board of Trustees. For possible action, on a request for petition to vacate the full width of 9th Street between Clark Avenue and Lewis Avenue in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the subject vacation request is to eliminate 9th Street as a public street between Lewis Avenue and Clark Avenue. At the time of the application, the applicant did not provide proof that those immediately affected by the vacation were not opposed to the vacation request. Staff has a policy of recommending approval only if the vacation requests are accompanied by signed and noted letters of no objection from those immediately affected by a vacation request. Therefore, staff recommends denial of this application. If approved, 9th Street between Lewis Avenue and Clark Avenue will be owned by the Clark County School District and closed to through traffic, and travelers in the area will need to use either 7th Street or 10th Street as alternate north-south corridors.
Thank you, and good evening. If we could hear from the applicant, if you give us your name and address.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Linda Perry, 4190 McLeod Drive, representing the Clark County School District. We did not have a letter of support initially, but we did come in and get a letter of support from, there's 13 owners that are from probably Lewis to Bridger, and we did receive a letter of support from five of those owners on there. We did look at some of the other apartment complexes that were on facing 9th Street, and they do have parking along the back and access along the back where they can come out on the alleyway. We did look at, because I know there's, like I said, there's 13 property owners, but the portion that we're asking to vacate is only between Clark and Lewis, which is bisecting our campus right now. So, as you've probably seen in the pictures, they do put up barriers during the day. They put up road closure signs that say, from 5:30 in the morning, and they bring them down about 2:30 in the afternoon so the kids can cross there. We were going to add some additional parking in there because we're losing our parking spots right now that the staff is parking in, where we had an agreement, kind of a gentleman's agreement with a church that was on 7th Street. So, we're going to try to use that as well. We do realize there's a fire hydrant along that area, so we're going to keep that area open, and we do know that the parking lot for the high school is also used because it's part of the historical district. So, people that come downtown, they use that parking lot for the high school, so we are going to keep that portion of the street open. We do understand that staff recommended denial, but we do agree with the conditions. So, with that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard on this item? Good evening, ma'am. If you could give us your name and address, please?
Good evening. My name is Jackie Ramirez. I'm a business owner at 531 South 7th Street. I'm also the president of the Downtown Professional District and Neighborhood Association of the City of Las Vegas, and I just wanted to fully support the request to vacate. In my Neighborhood Association, we meet with various neighbor businesses and also representatives from the LVA school that's affected. So, we need the need, we see the need to vacate 9th Street and to allow that to be closed to traffic for the purpose of increasing the student safety there, stopping the vehicular traffic, and then we would just like to see that it kind of maintains, you know, preserves the historic nature of the area with what they have planned going in there. But we fully support closing 9th Street, that portion of 9th Street between Clark and Lewis.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the public wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll open up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Schlotman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Last month, I was going back and forth on this, but, you know, this month, I've actually driven through there a few more times, and, you know, that the road, even though it's somewhat aligned with 9th Street, it's a smaller road than 9th Street on both sides of the school. As you're coming down 9th, there's this natural curb with this radius that comes around, and it makes you think that this is a private street anyways, or a private alley at the school. So, I think out of the past five years, I've finally taken that little street once about two weeks ago, and then I felt like I was on school property and I shouldn't have been there. So, I would support this, and I think it's justified. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners wish to be heard? Commissioner Bonar?
Yeah, my question to public works would be, are we going to end up with a blank easement for public utilities? There's bound to be some utilities in there now. They have to be either moved or protected, and who knows what needs will be utility-wise in the future. I'd hate to give that right up for infinity timewise. The other comment is circulation itself. This is a tight, compact grid area, and the minute you close one segment off, you're moving traffic differently, causing more problems in one area or another to make up the missing link. Beyond that, I'm not an advocate of one-way systems. Boy, I have a fun time downtown, don't I? But as long as it doesn't lead to that, and we're protected utility-wise, I could support it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners wish to be heard? Seeing none, Commissioner Schlotman, I'll entertain a motion. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, if you'll let me respond to those, I can.
Sure.
As far as the city interests, we'll reserve those through the order of vacation. So, this application, if approved, gives them the right, or essentially tells the city that we will vacate this road. Before we actually do the vacation, we'll talk to the utilities, and if they need to reserve easements, we will reserve those through the vacation process. So, things like drainage and fire road access will get through the city. Things like phone, power, gas, we'll ask those utilities if they need a reservation, and we'll reserve it if needed.
Thank you. Now, Commissioner Schlotman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Item number 17, abeyance, VAC 5644, I'd move to approve based on the justification of my testimony earlier.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item 17 carries.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, that item will go to City Council on February 18th.
Thank you. I'm going to pull item number 29 forward. Item number 29 is GPA 56918. The applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas. For possible action, on a request for a general plan amendment to amend the Trails Element of the General Plan and all related maps to remove a portion of an existing multi-use transportation trail on 9th Street between Fremont Street and Clark Avenue in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The item before you is a request to amend the 2020 Master Plan Trails Element for entertainment trail on a portion between Fremont Street and Clark Avenue on 9th Street. Given the development patterns in the area, it is deemed that that portion of trail is no longer required in this segment.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I will close public comment portion. Open up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Schlotman?
No comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Truesdale? Thank you. Commissioner Truesdale?
Yeah, since this trail does overlap something we just vacated, maybe we should have vacated this first or removed this first, but is, I guess for staff and Public Works, is this a beginning of a plan to remove the rest of Ninth Street?
Yes, the entertainment trail runs between Las Vegas Boulevard East to Ninth Street, and then south from Fremont Street to Clark Street, so the portion between Fremont and Clark will be removed completely.
That's...
Let me clarify, no, it's not a goal to eliminate Ninth Street from Fremont to Clark. This portion of the trail is, was designated to be a ten-foot wide sidewalk as part of that trail portion. That's already, and that was established prior to the Downtown Centennial Plan. The Downtown Centennial Plan already requires the ten-foot sidewalk. So, by eliminating this trail segment, it's still going to be there, but it just won't be a designated trail in itself. It was a kind of an add-on type part, and it does not function as what we planned to. So, there's no, what we're going to get in the long run will be exactly what we have, it just won't be a designated trail.
Okay, you understand what I'm getting at?
Yes.
Because we just did away with a section based on the school, and I know those people that have supported it, I'm not sure they would be as excited if they thought all of Ninth Street was going to be gone. So, that's, I just wanted to make that for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners wish to be heard on this? Saying none, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, item number twenty-nine, GPA 56918, I'd move to approve following staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner, please vote. Motion to approve item number twenty-nine carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item will be heard at the City Council meeting on February eighteenth.
Thank you, and I'm going to pull item thirty forward, GPA 56951. The applicant owner is City of Las Vegas. For possible action on a request for a general plan amendment to amend the public facilities and building element utility plan, this is all wards, staff is recommending approval. Staff, we can have a report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The item before you is an amendment to the twenty-twenty master plan public facilities element utility plan. Back in two thousand and thirteen, Assembly Bill two-thirty-nine passed the legislature, which required that we add a utility plan to our public facility element. There were three main requirements of the bill. The first was to coordinate with local, state, and federal agencies. The second was to create a map showing all the corridors designated within the City of Las Vegas, and the final one was to create a new, a substation, I'm sorry, for the, where am I at here, that we coordinate with the local entities. As a result of this coordination, we created a map, it should be in a blue sheet back up. This identifies all the corridors within the City of Las Vegas. These are existing and proposed over two-hundred kilovolt, kilovolt. The item is to approve this map and this amendment to the general plan of public facilities element. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this item? Saying none, I'll close the public comment portion, open up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Saying none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, regarding item thirty, my motion is to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner, please vote. Motion to approve item number thirty carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item will be heard at the February eighteenth City Council meeting.
I'm going to pull item thirty-two forward, which is GPA 57114. The applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas. For possible action on a request for a general plan amendment to amend the land use tables of the Las Vegas twenty-twenty master plan land use element, all wards again, staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item before you is a general house keeping item. In two thousand and eleven, the RD zoning district was removed as a zoning district. It was reinstated in two thousand and thirteen. In two thousand and fourteen, the RSL zoning district was introduced as well. This amendment amends the land use tables as shown before you on this chart to incorporate the RD district and the SL district into the land use plan. The RD district will be permissible under the R rural residential and the L low-density residential districts or designations, and the RSL will be permitted under the low-density designation and the medium-low density designation. This concludes my presentation, thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this item? Saying none, I'll close the public comment portion, open up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Saying none, I'll entertain a motion on item number thirty-two.
I move to follow staff's recommendation for approval on item thirty-two.
Thank you, Commissioner, please vote. Motion to approve item number thirty-two carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item will be heard at the February eighteen City Council meeting.
Thank you. We're going to go back on track now, I'll be, we'll be working on related items eighteen through twenty-one, beginning with item number eighteen, which is GPA 56713. The applicant is Merlin Hardy, owner is Bonanza Springs LLC. For possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from MLA medium-low attached density residential to M medium-density residential at four-nine-zero-one East Bonanza Road in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Related item number nineteen is ZON 56715. For possible action on a request for a rezoning from R-MH, which is Mobile Manufactured Home Residential, to R3 medium-density residential, staff is recommending approval. Related item number twenty, VAR 56712. For possible action, a request for a variance to allow one-hundred-and-thirty-five parking spaces where one-hundred-and-seventy-six spaces are required for a proposed eighty-unit multifamily dwelling, staff is recommending approval. Final related item number twenty-one is SDR 56711. For possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed eighty-unit multifamily residential development with waivers to allow a three-point-five-foot buffer along the east perimeter where six feet is required, a zero-foot buffer along the southern perimeter where six feet is required, and a zero-foot buffer along a portion of the western perimeter where six feet is required. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, this site was previously approved as a mobile home park. It traditionally has been a mobile home park before that. The applicant has since come in with a revised plan to do a attached multifamily project where we have duplexes attached together. As such, staff does find this is an infill project, and it is supported by Goal two-point-one-point-five, the Neighborhood Revitalization Section of the Housing Element, which encourages apartments and reduced setbacks under certain tightly controlled conditions, including provisions of adequate parking, where such measures will increase the viability in attracting those selected forms of infill development. Staff has determined that the proposed project will operate in harmony with the surrounding neighborhood and is recommending approval of all applications.
Good evening. If we could hear from the applicant, sir, if you could state your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Merlin Hardy. I live at four-ninety-four Spanish View Lane, and this is my partner Eric Crittison, and I was going to say pretty much what staff said, but I think they covered it all. We did originally purchase this property as, with the intent to put mobile home park, reestablish the existing mobile home park, and after working with staff extensively, we've come up with a better plan for the area that would be more appropriate for the use. And so, we're going forward with this, and the pictures that you're looking at right now are older pictures. I have some newer ones, but I think the older ones are adequate to show what we're doing out there.
Thank you very much. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on any of these items? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Sloman?
I think it's a great project. I think change and converting this from mobile home to residential or duplex is great, and you'll see my full support on this.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners wish to be heard? Saying none, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Chairman, on item eighteen, GPA 56713, I'd move to approve following staff's recommendations for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner, please vote, and please note I'll be registering a yes vote. Thank you. Motion to approve item number eighteen carries.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, on item number nineteen, ZON 56715, I'd move to approve following staff's recommendation of approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item number nineteen carries.
Mr. Chairman, on item number twenty, VAR 56712, I'd move to approve following staff's recommendations of approval.
Thank you, Commissioner, please vote. Motion to approve item number twenty carries.
And, Mr. Chairman, item number twenty-one, SDR 56711, I'd move to approve following staff's conditions and approval.
Thank you, Commissioner, please vote.
Commissioner Sloman, did you vote?
Yes.
Motion to approve item twenty-one carries.
Mr. Chairman, items eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one will be heard at the February eighteenth City Council meeting.
Good night, Sterling.
We're done.
Yep.
I'd just like to publicly thank staff. This was like, we really needed a shoehorn for this thing, and they worked really hard and made some changes and made this possible. Thank you.
Have a good night. Moving on now to related items numbers twenty-two and twenty-three, beginning with item number twenty-two, which is GPA 56915. The applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas. For possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from PF Public Facilities to MXU Mixed Use at eight-two-one North Las Vegas Boulevard in Ward Five, Councilman Barlow. Staff is recommending approval. Related item number twenty-three, ZON 56916. For possible action on a request for rezoning from CB Civic to C2 General Commercial in Ward Five, Councilman Barlow. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may I have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, due to a boundary line adjustment, we ended up with a parcel that has dual zoning and land use on it, and this will clean that up and bring it into conformance to the existing by admitting the general plan to mixed use and the zoning to C2. There was a boundary line adjustment done between the Reed Whipple Center and the library in order to create a more functional parcel out of both, and this is a cleanup of the land uses as they were not compatible at the time, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on these items? Saying none, I'll close the public comment portion, open up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Saying none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, on item twenty-two, GPA 56915, move to follow staff's recommendations.
Thank you, Commissioner, please vote.
For approval.
Motion to approve item number twenty-two carries.
Item twenty-three, ZON 56916, move to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner, please vote. Motion to approve item number twenty-three carries.
Mr. Chairman, items twenty-two and twenty-three will be heard at the City Council meeting on February eighteenth.
Thank you. And now move on to related items number twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, beginning with item number twenty-four, which is GPA 57029. The applicant owner is Crystal View Capital Fund IALC. For possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from L low-density residential to SC Service Commercial on the east side of San Jose Avenue, north of Sahara Avenue in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Related item number twenty-five, ZON 57030. For possible action on a request for a rezoning from R1 Single Family Residential and R2 Medium Low Density Residential to C1 Limited Commercial in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Final related item is number twenty-six, which is SDR 57031. For possible action on a request for site development plan review for a proposed three-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-square-foot restaurant with drive-through. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, a total of nine parcels, all zoned for residential use, are being proposed to be remapped into one parcel for the commercial development of a restaurant with a drive-through. The proposed rezoning of the site and associated general plan amendment are compatible with the existing adjacent service commercial designations and limited commercial zoning districts along Sahara Avenue. This use is permitted within the proposed C1 Limited Commercial Zoning District. As this new parcel is adjacent to a primary artery roadway, the type of development is appropriately located. The proposed restaurant with drive-through is being developed as a standalone project. The design is similar to other restaurants in the area and has met all minimum code requirements. Therefore, staff recommends approval of all three applications. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we hear from the applicant, as for disclosure, the applicant's representative is a client of my law firm, so out of an abundance of caution, I will be abstaining on items number twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six.
Good evening, Mr. Garcia, your name and address, please?
Commissioners George Garcia, ten fifty-five Whitney Ranch Drive, Suite two-ten. Pleasure to be before you, and we concur with the staff's analysis that we meet all the requirements for general plan amendment zone change and a site development review, and concur with the conditions of approval. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Do any members of the public wish to speak for or against any of these items? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Do any of the commissioners have any comment?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I met with the applicant, and what he represented in the meeting with me when he explained the project was substantially the same thing that he represented here today, and he explained some of the issues that they had and wanting to come in off Fremont and the state not wanting them to have any entrance on there. So, he redesigned the site plan, made this work, and looks like he has more letters of support than protests, and I think they did a pretty good job with landscaping and everything else. So, he'll see my support tonight. Thank you.
Any other members of the commission wish to be heard? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, on item number twenty-four, GPA 57029, I'd move to approve following staff's recommendation of approval.
Thank you, please vote. That motion carries noting the abstention of the chair. Item twenty-five.
Yes, Mr. Chair, item number twenty-five, ZON 57030, I'd move to approve following staff's conditions and recommendation for approval.
Please vote. That motion also carries noting the abstention of the chair. Item twenty-six.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, item twenty-six, SDR 57031, I'd move to approve following staff's conditions and recommendations, well, not their recommendation, but my recommendation of approval.
Thank you very much, and I think that staff's recommendation is now for approval. Is that correct, Director?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, following staff's recommendation of approval.
Thank you, please vote. And that motion also carries items twenty-four through twenty-six are all approved.
Mr. Chairman, item twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six will be heard at the City Council meeting on February eighteenth.
Have a good night. Moving on now to related items twenty-seven... Moving on now to related items 27 and 28, beginning with item 27, which is GPA 57254. The applicant is Nevada Hand. The owner is Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. For possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from SC Service Commercial to M Medium Density Residential at 501 North Lamb Boulevard in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Related item 28 is ZON 57255, for possible action on a request for rezoning from C1 Limited Commercial to R3 Medium Density Residential. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting a general plan amendment and rezoning to match the multifamily, multifamily residential property adjacent to the north in anticipation of redevelopment of the site. The proposed designations are compatible with the adjacent parcel and development in the area. Surrounding area is fully developed with all infrastructure and utilities in place to support the proposed development or redevelopment of the parcel. The changing in the land use designation and zoning district of the subject site will facilitate the redevelopment of this parcel with quality multifamily product that will be an enhancement to the area as well as carry out the policy intentions of the neighborhood revitalization strategy area of the Las Vegas 2020 master plan. Therefore, staff recommends approval of both applications. Thank you.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant, please? Good evening, sir. If we could have your name and address.
Good evening, Chair Commissioners, Mark Bangen with LR Nelson, here representing our applicant, Nevada Hand. We're here to answer any questions that you have. We agree with staff. If there's any questions you have, we can answer them.
Thank you. Before we go to public comment, Commissioner Truesdale.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain on these two items inasmuch as one of the agents in my office is involved in another transaction on another parcel that the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters owns.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on any of these items? Ma'am, if you'll please come forward. Good evening. If we could have your name and address, please?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Victoria Bridges Hudson, and I live at 461.
Ma'am, I'm going to ask you to just move a little closer to the mic so we can hear you better. Thank you.
My name is Victoria Bridges Hudson. I live at 461 North Lamb, and our concern is the type of units we're going to put in there, our zone for. We already have so much traffic next to the school, so much vandalism, and we also have a low-income housing on the other side of their property. So our major concern in this is whether we're going to have more low-income housing there because we've had so many problems where we live, and these are all condos, two-bedroom, one-bedroom, and elderly people, a lot of us, so that's our major concern.
Thank you very much. Do any other members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Sir, I'll give you 60 seconds for rebuttal.
At this point in time, it's for the zone change and for the general plan amendment. We don't have a site plan at this point in time, but Nevada Hand does do low-income housing for families. They are looking at putting a low-income housing, multifamily residential site for this parcel.
Thank you, sir. Do any members of the commission wish to speak on this? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, yeah, just pulling together a few thoughts here. I mean, this isn't a site development review yet. This is a zone change, I think from a service commercial to a, the rezoning to an R3 would be appropriate. Could you tell me about what you're looking at in the future? I mean, how many units you're looking on, looking at possibly putting on the site?
At this point in time, we don't know an exact unit count, but I can also say that Nevada Hand has prepared, or has built many different projects around town. They're well-maintained. They keep ownership of the properties for up to 50 years plus. It's in their deed, it's in their tax credits that they go through, so they're very proud of their properties that they've built. I'm sure that there's been other properties in the city that you guys are probably very familiar with. You know, they do a really good job maintaining them and making sure that the people that are there are, you know, are not, I don't know what else to say.
What's currently on the site?
Right now, it's the old Carpenters Union.
Okay.
That big building in the back and then the two mobile units there.
Directly to the north of this property, what's directly to the north?
Directly to the north is a low-income housing R3 property also, and to the south is the school.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Bonner.
If I can ask the applicant through you, tell us a bit about your management and style and your ability to keep your residents from, you know, injuring the neighborhood in any way.
Yeah, there's a, not a rigorous screening process, but there is a very well-organized screening process for the residents in, I mean, they've developed at least 20 properties around the whole valley, and they've never had issues with police coming to them. They've always had a very respectable, respected presence in the community. They fit, you know, they fill a needed gap within our community.
Okay, I think the neighbor that spoke certainly wants to hear what you have to say about your management, and never say never, by the way, in terms of never having had any incidents in your existing projects. And I think the whole thing will manage, assuming it's approved, will deal with management and the quality of your management and the continued upkeep of the property itself.
That they do.
That's all I have, Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners wish to be heard?
Mr. Chair, I think I would just make a comment that, you know, the two things we are voting on tonight do not include the site development plan, so I would encourage the applicant to meet with the neighbors that are here. Maybe, you know, you could get their names before you leave tonight.
Definitely.
And make sure that you include them in any plans before you bring a project back to us and tell us what it is that you want to do. It sounds like they have some strong feelings about that.
Definitely.
All right.
And we did hold a neighborhood meeting for these items. There was one person that showed up.
Thank you. Commissioner Schlattman.
Yes, Mr. Chair, just a couple more comments. Nevada Hand did build a project in my neighborhood, and, you know, and I'm always concerned about what happens in my neighborhood, and they actually did a very good job and took care of it, and it was a lower income for seniors, and it's probably one of the nicest-looking projects in that neighborhood. So, that being said, tonight, I would request that you reach out to the three individuals back here and get their numbers and talk to them about what you're doing, and see if you could show them projects that were successful like the ones that you put in my neighborhood, and try getting them on board before you bring us a site development review. This isn't the end of the process. This is just the beginning, and then we'll have time to look at that site development review and make sure that it fits within that neighborhood. This doesn't mean that they can go out and start building immediately. So, with that being said, item number 27 GPA 57254, I would move to approve following staff's conditions and recommendation of approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item number 27 carries.
And Chairman, on item 28 ZON 57255, I'd move to follow staff's conditions and recommendation of approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item number 28 carries noting the abstention of Commissioner Truesdale, and I apologize, noted the abstention of Commissioner Truesdale on item number 27 as well.
Mr. Chairman, items 27 and 28 will be heard at the February 18 City Council meeting.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Thank you. Have a good night. Moving on now to related items 34, 33, and 34, beginning with item number 33, which is ZON 57131. The applicant owner is Ford Apache Homes, Inc., for possible action on a request for a rezoning from U undeveloped TC Town Center, general plan designation to TC Town Center on the south side of Rome Boulevard, west of Grand Montecito Parkway in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Related item number 34 is SDR 56848, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed parking facility with waivers to allow a zero-foot perimeter landscape buffer where 15 feet is required along the north perimeter and a five-foot wide buffer along the east perimeter where an eight-foot buffer is required. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have the report, please?
This project will provide additional parking to the office complex to the east for future tenant demands. The front 20% of the parcels shall be developed at a later phase. A waiver is required to allow a zero-foot wide perimeter landscape buffer where 15 is required along the north perimeter. Staff supports this request as a condition has been added to require this buffer when the remaining portion of the parcel is developed. Waiver is also required to allow a five-foot wide perimeter landscape buffer where eight is required along the east perimeter. Staff supports this as the project is developed to support the office complex and it becomes an internal lot line. Staff recommends approval of both items, and that ends our report.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission, Jennifer Roberts of Duane Morris, 100 North City Parkway, appearing on the applications which allow for a supplemental parking lot for an office building on an adjacent parcel that's partially occupied by a shurian. We held a neighborhood meeting with one person in attendance who expressed support because this parking lot will alleviate the need for a parking garage that was previously approved on a nearby parcel. Staff has recommended approval, and so we would ask that you follow staff's recommendation, and we do agree to the conditions.
Thank you very much. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on these items? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Bonner.
I'm kind of ashamed that our staff didn't quite extract as much perimeter landscaping as they could have, and we don't even know what this building's going to look like, and what the landscape is, let's say hiding, is a sea of parking. So I'm really disappointed that we've given in on the measurements of the landscaping on the three sides. Staff, can you give us any rationale for that?
In reviewing the project, we worked with the applicant to come up with a landscape plan that would work best within what their request was. There have been some modifications throughout the time on this project, and we felt that the internal landscaping buffer between two parking lots next to a landscape buffer was sufficient in order to buffer the parking lot from another parking lot, and the other portion, about 215, which is the Beltway. So that's where our major landscape waivers are. The other landscape waiver that is, when a future developer comes in, staff felt that was necessary in order to move the project forward, and then subsequently at a later time, that landscaping will be required if the future 20% is developed along the roadway of that parcel.
I don't know. I'm going to scratch my head on that one.
Any other commissioners wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I'll open it up for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Regarding item 33 ZON 57131, my motion is to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item number 33 carries.
And regarding the SDR, I'm satisfied by staff's explanation inasmuch as, you know, one side of this, we're looking at 215, the other is a buffer with another parking lot, so my motion is to also follow staff's recommendation for approval on item 34.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion to approve item number 34 carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, items 33 and 34 will be heard at the City Council meeting on February 18th.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Moving on now to related items 35 and 36, beginning with item number 35, which is ZON 56357. The applicant owner is Nirvana LLC for possible action on a request for a rezoning from U undeveloped SC Service Commercial, general plan designation to C1 Limited Commercial at 4940 Vegas Drive in Ward 3, Councilman Barlow. Staff is recommending approval. Related item number 36 is VAR 57299, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a lot width of 74 feet where 100 feet is required. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may I have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed rezoning is consistent with the surrounding zoning district and land uses and is in conformance with the underlying service commercial general plan land use category. This variance will allow a legal non-conforming lot to become a conforming lot with the zoning district that is being requested. Staff recommends approval of both items. Please note, we have received one letter of support since publication.
Thank you, and good evening. If we could hear from the applicant, please, and sir, if you'll give us your name and address, it would be appreciated.
Good evening. Jesse Singh, I'm managing member for Nirvana LLC, and I respectfully request following staff recommendation of approval for rezoning and variance of the property from undeveloped to commercial, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any other members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I will close public comment portion, open up for discussion amongst commissioners. Commissioner Goines.
No, no question. Any thought of what your future?
At this point in time, I don't have any plans.
Okay.
I do intend to develop in the future, you know, it could be a car wash, or restaurant, or coffee shop. Not sure at this point in time.
Please work closely with the church there.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Yep, thank you. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll move to follow staff's recommendation for approval of ZON 56357, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item 35 carries.
Item 36, move to follow staff's recommendation for approval of item VAR 57299, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Motion to approve item number 36. Carries.
Mr. Chairman, items 35 and 36 will be heard at the February 18 City Council meeting.
Thank you. And now moving on to related items 37, 38, and 39, starting with item number 37, which is VAR 56177. The applicant owner is Gerdwara Baba Deep Singh, Inc., for possible action on a request for a variance to allow residential adjacency setback of 40 feet where a minimum of 105 feet is required at 6341 West Sloan Mountain Road in Ward 4, Councilman Anthony. Staff is recommending denial. Related item number 38, which is SUP 56178, for possible action on a request for a major amendment to a previously approved special use permit for a proposed 15,772 square foot expansion to an existing 3,882 square foot house of worship use. Staff is recommending denial. Final related item number 39 is SDR 56179, for possible action on a request for a major amendment to a previously approved. amendment to a previously approved plot plan for a proposed 15,772 square foot expansion to an existing 3,882 square foot House of Worship building. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have your report, please?
Mr. Chairman, currently, the one lot is undeveloped with a nonpermitted 432 square foot modular building, while the other consists of 3,882 square foot House of Worship. The applicant is proposing to expand the House of Worship to 19,222 square feet. In addition, the applicant is proposing to retain the nonpermitted 432 square foot modular building to use it in office space for the House of Worship. This request will increase the building area required landscaping and required parking. As such, a major amendment to the approved plot plan and special use permit is required. The proposed expansion of the primary building complies with all minimum code requirements with the exception of the residential adjacency standards, and a variance is needed to be approved in order to move the project forward. Although the proposed height of 35 feet is within the maximum height requirements typically allowed in an RE zone, the subject site is surrounded by residentially zoned properties and is subject to the residential adjacency standards. As the proposed 35-foot tall building would require 105-foot setback to the nearest protected property per Title 19, the expanded building only provides 40-foot setback where 105 feet is required. The applicant is requesting a variance to address this issue. The applicant is, staff finds the applicant, the site is overbuilt as prevalent by the variance that is needed to address the residential adjacency, and staff finds that this is a self-imposed hardship and is recommending denial. As such, staff is recommending denial of the subsequent site plan review and the special use permit. Please note, we have received additional letters of support and protest since publication.
Thank you. And if we could hear from the applicant, please. Good evening. If we could have your name and address?
Good evening. My name is Jaspal Sidhu, 6283 Dean Martin Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89118. We're here for the extension of the existing building for the House of Worship, and this, if you are looking at the screen, this is the existing building is right here, the darker portion, and we would like to extend it further towards the street, towards the Lone Mountain. When we built this building in 1999, this front area was only planned to have the extension of the building. At that time, we got approval with the Phase 2 building, was proposed at that time, but we never got a chance to build it, and then, you know, the economy was also bad, and now we are planning to move forward on it. We met with the neighbors. I would like to show you here on the access map. This is the parcel which is owned by us. This also is owned by us, and this side property is also owned by us. Where is this parcel, this parcel, this parcel, and these are the only parcels which are right adjacent to our property. We met with all those people, and they are all in support of this project, and we have turned in their letters to the staff, and I have the copies with me also to give it to the commissioners. And further down, this property is also an existing church, and the rest around it is, you know, the streets. So our project is not impacting the rest of the neighborhood. And also, this property, we do have the landscaping on all four sides at 20 feet over center, which is in dense landscaping to have the minimum impact on the neighbors. And if you have any other questions, I would be more than happy to answer those.
Thank you very much, sir. Do any other members, do any members of the public wish to be heard on this item? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion. Do any members of the commission wish to be heard? Commissioner Quinn?
Good evening, sir. How are you?
Good.
So when was this neighborhood meeting held?
There was no neighborhood meeting. We met them personally.
Oh, like, door-to-door?
Door-to-door, yes.
Okay. And so, and so when you went door-to-door, everybody liked your project?
Yes.
Okay.
And I have written letters from them, signed by them, and turned in.
Could you give those to the clerk, please? How many do you have?
[inaudible]
So we have four, four letters from four neighbors?
Yes.
Okay. And then that's really nice and everything, but it's my opinion, when you go from 105 feet setback to 40, leaving 65 feet, I think it's only fair to the entire neighborhood, meaning the 1,000-feet justification, that you should hold a neighborhood meeting where you send out the notifications and let the neighbors within 1,000 feet of your project come and let them see, because, you know, this is a big modification. This isn't like a little modification. This is something kind of big. And so I'm just making my opinion, and then I'll listen to my fellow commissioners, but my opinion would be something this intense for this area, I'm sure it's nice, but I think that when you're coming into this neighborhood asking for so much, we need more than four signatures. So it's my personal opinion, not Byron's, not Trinity's, nobody else's, my opinion that this should be held for 30 days and you should hold a neighborhood meeting so all your neighbors within 1,000 feet of you, because you have lots of nice neighbors around here, and this is a very, you're asking for a lot. So that's just my opinion, and I'm going to let the rest of my neighbors, my fellow commissioners speak. Thank you.
Commissioner Slaba?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Question for staff, because I, maybe it's simple, and I'm just not wrapping my head around it, but in the project description, it says this request will increase the building area required landscaping and required parking, but it looks like they are in compliance on parking where only 47 parking spaces are required, where 94 are provided, but 94 seems low for 15,000-square-foot building. Could you kind of talk to me about that?
For House of Worship, the parking is based upon either the worship area or the fixed seating. In this case, it's fixed seating. It is one space for every four fixed seats is the requirement. So the parking requirements for House of Worship is a lower standard than our other products, for our commercial product. It is the lowest standard.
Okay. And, Mr. Chairman, if I may ask the applicant one question?
Sir, please.
Sir, if I could ask, why keep the modular building if you're building a 15,000-square-foot building? Why not get rid of that modular building and incorporate it into the nice new structure that you're going to be constructing?
We want our building to be, Las Vegas is a destination place, and, you know, we have people even come from all over the country to hold their marriages here. We want the building to be very nice, very elegant, and I would, if you can look at the camera, you know, that I have this renting of this building. So, you know, we want this building to be elegant, yes.
Yes, I do understand that is a beautiful-looking building, but why keep the modular building? The modular building's not a beautiful building.
The one which is in the back, that is.
Trailer.
The trailer home, the trailer office.
That is, you know, is, actually, you know, we have, we're trying to hide it in the back with some landscaping around it, and we just would like to use it for maybe a few years, and eventually just we are going to get rid of it. It will help us during construction, during, you know.
But you wouldn't be willing to tear that down after construction and incorporate your office into that new building?
We can, we can.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners?
Yeah, a few comments. Mr. Chair, through you, I'm just going to state the obvious. Beautiful building, unique piece of property, you know, a long piece of property that you're putting this on. I, I think Commissioner Quinn hit the nail on the head. I think if you're going to do something like this, I want more than just a few neighbors providing their input on this, and I think it would be helpful, would be helpful for me if you had a neighborhood meeting before coming back to us, before I felt like I could, before I could vote on this. So I, my recommendation is, right along with Commissioner Quinn's, that you do have a neighborhood meeting first and then come back to us.
Any other commissioners before I speak, or Commissioner Goines?
Yeah, I guess I wanted to go back to the building on the property. It's a modular building, but it's not in conformance. Is that correct?
No, modular building is not in conformance.
It's an illegal modular building.
The building itself does not have a permit. That's what makes it illegal. The siding of the building meets setback requirements. It just doesn't meet the requirements for a building permit.
Gotcha.
Sometimes that happens. Modular buildings end up in places, but they do need permits in order to be legalized, and that's one of the conditions.
Commissioner Stephen Quinn, nothing more permanent than a temporary building. Thank you. Your project is beautiful. However, you're having a big impact on your surrounding neighborhood, and I'm going to have to agree with Commissioners Moody and Quinn on this. I'm going to ask you to obey this for 30 days, and you may need to look at 60, it's up to you, but I would ask you to obey it, and in the interim, have a neighborhood meeting because we would like to see how the neighbors, who your project's going to have an impact on, see what they have to say about it, and so, and I think it'll help you, because I know this is going to go forward to the City Council as well. So I'm asking you to, if you would be agreeable, to obey this for 30 days, possibly 60, however long you think you need in order to get a neighborhood meeting put together.
I would say 30 days is enough.
Okay. And Commissioner Moody, would you give us a motion on that?
I'd be happy to. My motion is to obey items 37, 38, and 39. Can I just confirm with staff that 30 days will give them sufficient time to notice neighborhood meeting and then hold that?
Yeah, that will give us sufficient time if they can get a meeting place within that timeframe. If we're going to do the notification, we need approximately 15 days to get it all set up. If they're going to do the notice itself, they need 10 days in order to get the notice out. So we can assist the applicant. We'll have the case planner for this item give you a call that you've worked with and help you out with that neighborhood meeting notification, and you can either hire the city to do the notice, or you can hire us to do the labels, whatever you'd like to do, and we'll get that put together quickly.
Okay. Thank you. Just to reiterate, my motion is to obey items 37, 38, and 39 until the February 10, 2015 Planning Commission meeting.
Excuse me.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Moody, would you like to be at that neighborhood meeting?
I would like to be at that neighborhood meeting.
Thank you. I would too. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to obey items 37, 38, and 39 to the February 10 meeting. Okay, we're now moving on to director's business. We'll begin with item number 52, which is TXT 57244. The applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas, for discussion and possible action on a request to update the downtown Centennial plan to add the commercial recreation slash amusement outdoor use to the Parkway Center District and Symphony Park Sub-District to allow for a possible stadium development and to provide for other related matters. In Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, this will add the outdoor commercial recreation amusement to Symphony Park standard designs uses, which would permit a possible stadium in the future to be developed within the Symphony Park design, within Symphony Park, and staff is recommending approval.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, one question reading the staff report, and sorry, I wasn't listening when you were just now talking. Why'd you mark through, why didn't staff mark through sports stadium? Because this is for Symphony Park. Isn't that where they're wanting to put the sports stadium?
Yes, this will bring it into conformance with Title 19. We don't have a sports stadium use. The zoning code is more general in uses, so a stadium would fall under general, or commercial outdoor amusement is where our stadiums live, along with other uses. Once again, a zoning code isn't, a use table isn't always specific, because we can't anticipate what the new stadiums might be called in 10 years. They might be something different, but still kind of the same. So that's why we don't use the specific term stadium in this case.
But, Mr. Rankin, would the vote for yes for an outdoor amusement recreation hold it to only for an outdoor use? Like, let's just say the stadium, you know, God forbid, fell apart or it didn't happen or something, but would this still hold true that only an outdoor use could be used on that property?
Well, it would be one of the uses that could be permitted within the Symphony Park. It would, it just adds to the use table that's already there. Currently, Symphony Park permits residential, medical uses.
I see.
Hotels, casinos, the broad range. This adds this as an additional use that could be permitted.
So if we get the stadium and this passes, this is all great, the stadium unfortunately falls through, we still have the backup of all those other uses, is that correct?
Correct. The uses could go on that site.
Okay, thank you.
It doesn't lock any specific use on that site.
Right. Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
What about amusement indoor? Would that be allowable by right?
Mr. Chair, if I might, definition of commercial recreation amusement outdoor is defined as an outdoor facility or area for sport, entertainment, games of skill or recreation that is open to use by the general public for a fee. The term includes, without limitation, game courts, water slides, golf courses, outdoor miniature golf courses, drive-in theaters, batting cages, practice instructional fields, amusement parks, amphitheaters, and sports events. I, it's just, again, adding a category to the land use that is allowable within Symphony Park.
Didn't answer my question. What would happen if it was indoor? Would it be allowable or not? If it was a totally enclosed stadium? My question specifically, why do we have outdoor on there?
That's an excellent question.
From my understanding of the code, it would not permit an indoor stadium.
Well, that makes absolutely zero sense that we would like exclude all indoor facilities. So, I don't know.
Is it, I mean, this is such a, it's a little Cracker Barrel stuck in here at number 52, this checks amendment, but is it just possible to hold it for 30 days to think about it? Because I'm confused about it.
I think, again, this is, it's sort of like enabling legislation. It just allows this kind of a use within Symphony Park, so there's really no harm if the council or the commission's okay with moving this forward at this time. We can have that conversation as staff to determine whether or not we should create a category that would allow an indoor stadium and then bring that back to you for your consideration.
Yeah, I just think, because, let's just say the stadium, which we're hoping doesn't fall through, does fall through, then we're stuck with an open. does fall through, then we're stuck with an open arena that has to be open. And I just think maybe the-- maybe we should rethink the wording a little bit, is what I'm trying to say.
This particular text amendment doesn't set-- doesn't require the city to do anything. Again, it's just adding to the table the kinds of things that can go there. So, it doesn't mean we have to do an outdoor stadium under any circumstance. It just allows for that.
Ms. Chairman, not to confuse things, I guess if a indoor stadium had a removable roof, would that be an indoor or outdoor stadium? I think what we have before us is what is envisioned as enabling legislation for the downtown Centennial Park. And I would suspect if there was a clamoring out there for somebody to spend another hundred million on something, we'd see a change to this in the future. So, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion for approval following staff's recommendation. All right, okay.
Commissioner Boner?
I think I'm going to-- I'm going to consider it this way, that this is probably a referendum of what the Planning Commission thinks of a sports stadium on the Symphony Park. I'm going to vote my way based on what I think this is a Planning Commission referendum toward that. You do what you want.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners wish to be heard? Okay, if we have a mo-- you want to repeat your motion, Commissioner?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would move to follow staff's recommendation for approval on the proposed text amendment.
Motion to approve fails. I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, item number fifty-two, TXT five-seven-two-four-four, I'd move to deny based on the wording of this text amendment.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote.
So, the yes is to vote no?
Please note, a yes vote is for denial. Motion to deny, Carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item will move before the City Council in ordinance form.
Thank you. Going on to item number fifty-three is DIR five-seven-zero-nine-three. Applicant owner, City of Las Vegas. For discussion and possible action on request for the election of the twenty-fifteen Planning Commission officers, I would like to open the nominations by nominating my vice chair, or our vice chair, Todd Moody, as chairman. Do I have a second?
You second.
One second. Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. Please vote. Voice vote?
Question for staff. Do I vote or not?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, you vote for yourself.
Yeah. Vote.
I think it's a voice vote, huh?
Where's the vote? Oh, we already voted?
There we go. Please vote.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chairman.
Just a minute, Commissioner. The--
I'm excited.
Commissioner Moody is elected chairman for twenty-fifteen Planning Commission.
And it gives me great pleasure to nominate my colleague, my friend, a great Nevadan and citizen, Trinity Schlotman, as the vice chairman for the next year's Planning Commissioner. Good luck to you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Moody.
Third.
Do any other nominations? Nominations are hereby closed. Please vote. Commissioner Schlotman is elected as vice chair of the twenty-fifteen Planning Commission. Okay, we'll go to the final agenda item, which is citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Any members wish to be heard under this portion of the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, just a comment. I just wanted to-- I know you've been our chairman for the last year. I just wanted to thank you for your exemplary leadership at stewarding this Planning Commission through not so much bad times, but keeping us on task, being the leader that you are. It's been very proud to serve and have you serve as our chairman. So, I just wanted to put that on the record as well.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And I wanted to second that, too, Commissioner. You-- I don't think anybody could move a meeting quicker, faster, or more eloquent. And it was certainly proven through the medical marijuana zonings. We were spoken about throughout the city, throughout the county, and it wasn't as much as how we voted, but as how the meeting was ran, and that was because of you. And I'm so proud to be your friend. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, you definitely have had some of the most interest in meetings since I've been on this board, and I think you've done a terrific job and been up there for two years and happy you were. Ran the meetings well and kept people in line whenever they would go too long. So, and you listened to us whenever we had additional comments. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, one, I'd really like to congratulate you on the time you've served us as chairman, and also congratulate Todd Moody and Commissioner Schlotman, and hope they serve us as well, and we can continue these short meetings.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, just thank you very much for all you've done. You've done it efficiently and stayed on course. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Chair, it's actually been two years that you've served as our chair, and that's a lengthy tenure to do what you've done. It's been my pleasure to serve as your vice chair and hope I can fill those big shoes that are left for me. Thanks.
Real big shoes. But thank you all for the kind comments. And then, again, I'd like to congratulate Commissioner Moody for his election to chairman and Commissioner Sloman as vice chair.
Mr. Chairman, on behalf of staff, it's been a real pleasure and honor to serve your tenure and its attention to staff in response and attending meetings and everything. It's been fantastic. So, thank you very much.
Even though it was late a few times, but thank you all. This meeting's hereby adjourned.